I'm going to say I pledge allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you.
Now, just for the record, I'll be taking notes this evening, since Nancy is not with us, meaning the minutes.
Yeah, sorry, my little Lee. Or maybe we're just on time.
Six thirty.
Yep. All right. We wanted you to come in, to talk about building inspector's job and how it goes each day, and really to talk about that sign-off sheet that you issue when you give somebody a permit, correct?
Yep.
Okay.
One of the biggest complaints is that what's happening lately, there's been some issues where things aren't being done right, people aren't being notified right. One of our, my questions, I shouldn't say our, but mine, I think my caller parts are with me. Can we make some mandatories on that sheet? Not a lot of them, but I'm saying, like, when I said that, someone came to me and said, "Bill, listen, if someone comes in there and asks him for a shed permit, are you going to make him go to the fire department? Are you going to make him go to some of these departments?" And I said, "All he needs to do is put NA, not applicable." Right? And then they say, "Well, you're back to where you started then, because right now the sheet, he can put NA if he wants to." My point being was, I was saying is, a big building that comes through, big project that comes through, can you say they have to go to fire? They said, "You're already doing it. That's already your job. You're already doing it." So, I don't know what we can do to try and make this so we get this stuff down pat. And my thing was to put mandatory on a few of them.
Which we already have.
Okay. Do you know which ones you have? Could you tell us which ones are?
Absolutely. They're right on it. Conservation, the mandatory. Tax people, the mandatory. Those are the only things that are mandatory.
What was the second one?
Tax.
Tax.
What other ones are on the list, Pat?
And if your taxes aren't paid.
Right. 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 What other ones do you have on there?
Planning board.
Okay.
For the health, fire department, which you said it wasn't, but it's always been on.
Is that mandatory?
No.
Can we make it a mandatory?
The only two mandatory are a conservation and tax.
I didn't say you can't. I'm saying that we should.
Why?
Because if a guy comes in for a shed, or he's, certain renovations does not require a person to go before, and believe me, I know, I'm not going to send somebody to the fire department. If they do want a shed, it will attack people.
Right. Right. So if you put mandatory down on that sheet, you could no, later on, you can't put NA. If a guy comes in for a shed.
Well, I can.
So what I'm saying-
I do that with the conservation.
Right.
I don't send somebody, naturally, I always ask them for a plan, how about the setbacks?
Yep.
If they're doing a shed, ask them about wetlands.
Right. Well, one of the things we're trying to, one of the things we're trying to cure, and I guess I'm probably not getting it said right, or whatever, we had a couple instances where buildings have been put, set wrong in the wrong places, and what we're trying to do is we're trying to come up with a plan where we're putting in place stops where this isn't going to keep happening. And my personal opinion was start with the fire, because he said he wasn't notified on a certain project, which caused a lot of havoc, but I guess if you were to put mandatory down on your sheet, you're doing it kind of anyway, because you're already saying, "Fire," but for some reason, he, certain projects didn't get notified. I mean, how do we, how do we say, how do we stop that? You know, it's all I'm saying.
It's important, mandatory. It doesn't bother me.
So you have the discretion to check off whatever you want? Everything could be on there, and you just check that, you know, most definitely, they have to go see the tax department in town, make sure they don't owe us any taxes and conservation because of wetlands and those kinds of things. And if you, in your choice, make as building inspector, you could say, "Well, maybe this project, we should have the fire department." But we don't, you could just check that off, correct?
Absolutely.
Okay. So you don't, it's up to you, it's your discretion, who everybody should see.
But if, right, if we had a project come through, a big project came through, that there's no, there's no, there's nothing built in there that, like, if a big project comes through, they have to come before fire, it's you, you would say, "Yeah, you have to come."
Absolutely.
Okay. So, I guess it's getting away from where I wanted it to go.
Well, let me, let me help, let me see if I can help. So, we asked a question, and the answer is simply that there are two mandatory sign-offs.
Only two.
One is having to do with taxes, the other one having to do with conservation. And depending on the size and the scope of the, of the project, including a large project, which, we don't have that many, and, you know, we have what-
Quite a few right now.
We have a few now, but it's, you know, they're few and far between. Over, over many years, we, you know, this, we have, we have some big ones now, let's just say that.
Yeah.
So, based on your discretion, then you're going to, forget about whether it's mandatory or not, for that project, you're going to check off the ones that you feel are necessary for that project.
Absolutely.
So, for example, one of the big projects, we have a main street, even though it's not mandatory on the sheet to put fire department, we would check, you would check our fire department for, for a large project, a complex project with multiple buildings.
Definitely.
And that's the way it's been done since you've been on the job. Okay.
Okay.
Thank you for that.
But there's nothing, there's nothing in there that, when those projects come along, right now, you said conservation, and you said the tax rate is definite, that's definite.
Yep.
I understand for a small project, the taxes have to be paid, but, you know, that's, I understand all that.
Right.
But there's no built-in mechanism for a bigger project for the fire, or for a, a couple of the mandatory-
Any big project, they have any house, any addition.
Right.
They're always asked if they have working smoke detectors, and if they've been inspected by a-
Right. Yeah. Right.
Fire inspector.
Okay.
Could you do me a favor? Could you give me a list of the non-mandatory? Planning board is one, fire department, health department.
Assessors.
Assessors, okay.
Water and sewer.
Water and sewer, okay.
Road commission, zoning board, and all other departments.
Okay, thank you.
Because what's happened is, a lot of people, a lot of departments have come and complained that they're not getting the information they need to get. And I'm the one that's up here saying it, but they're not getting the information they need to get. Like, conservation's not getting what they need to get, the information from you, and I was just trying to, trying to make the town government run smoother to try and make this happen. One thing is, one thing is, is I know, and I understand, you don't need to go to every one of them, but I think if you could go to the ZBA, if there was a big project coming through for ZBA, or if there was an issue, like a ZBA, not like a stupid shed thing, or a guy moving from one building to the same thing into another building, but you would be willing to go to a ZBA meeting and sit in on it.
And they talk about-
Because what they're saying is, things are not running smoothly, and, and the town's got a couple of issues in front of them right now that we have to defend, and we need to find a mechanism to make this run smoother. And that's, and we're trying to find that mechanism.
Sure.
And right now, without trying to talk about the specifics, a couple buildings weren't put right, it's going to cost the town some money to straighten it out, and I thought we could come here and we could somehow figure out a plan that we could stop all this. And I guess, talking to you, you've already got the, you've already been doing that, you've been saying the fire, you've been telling the people what they got to do, so I don't know, I'm kind of confused what we need to do to make it, to try and run smoother.
We had Denise make an inquiry at Goldman and Page, and it's the state building code provides at least two instances in which permit applications under the building code must be referred to the fire chief. Section 108.3, which provides that temporary structures and uses must be approved by the building inspector in consultation with the fire chief. Okay. Section 107, 1 and 2, which provides that a permit, applications under chapters 4, special requirements based on use and occupancy, fire protection systems of 34 existing structures, the building code must be filed simultaneously with the fire chief and building inspector. I can give you a copy of this if you want this. I'm sure you're familiar with this.
It is familiar.
Yeah, okay. And the fire inspector can come to you at any given time and ask you to take it.
That's in the past, in other cases.
But he has in the past?
Yep.
Okay. Good. Good.
I've known him for years.
Yep, I know you have. That's what, when you said that, then you've known each other for a very long term.
So are you suggesting that maybe that should be put into the mandatory list when it is applicable by those two sections? We could do that.
What I wanted to try and do is, I, but-
We could put on the sign-off sheet a third mandatory, and that is, fire department, when these two sections apply, so that if I'm building a shed, these two sections are not going to apply, but if I'm building something, it's going to be on the mandatory side of the ledger, and that might make, that might possibly prevent some issues in the future for the next big project.
Right. I also wanted to see conservation put in there?
It's already in there.
It is.
It's already mandatory?
Mandatory is in there. Taxes and, and-
Those two are on every-
Conservation's already in there. So if you want to put fire department, I would be in favor of that pertaining to these two sections, if and when they apply. A little still discretionary, but at least you embed it on the mandatory side of the ledger.
How about the planning board if it was a major project?
Well, then everything, then everything can slide over to mandatory, but then it becomes discretionary, really, by the building inspector.
Well, I'm not saying, I'm not saying everything, but I mean, I can't, I can understand health would fall back under maybe conservation, and health may fall under the building inspector, but planning board, that's kind of a start of a project, is planning board. You know what I mean? So I would think that if Pat, someone came before him, and Pat said, "You got to go to planning board," and they said, "Well, maybe I don't. At least it's mandatory." He has something to back him up by saying, "It's here. The Sleckman said I got to have you go to planning board," or whatever. You know what I mean? I just think one, that would be one major one, I would think.
Would that fold in, everybody trying to put in three windows?
No, 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 no. That, he would put in not applicable. If someone came in to have three windows put in a house, Pat has the right to say, "Not applicable, not applicable, not applicable." That's his right. And if someone came in for a shed, and we said they have to go to fire for a shed, everyone's got to go to fire for a shed.
I don't know if you realize, Mark, only if you have your sign-off sheet in the beginning, you also have a final sign-off sheet. If you're building like, if you're building in a higher house, you have to do a final sign-off before you can get an occupancy permit.
And you check off on there what, everything? What's on there, Pat? I mean, imagine if you built a home.
Right off the bat is the electrical department.
Yep.
They have to have their building permit signed off. They have to have their building signed off.
Yep.
Twice by me, twice by the fire inspector. On a lot of things. And on a big project, they have to do a final sign-off, which is the electrical department only if they require new holes.
On the property?
Yep.
Then, not, no, I'm sorry. That's, yeah, that's the electrical department. Then the fire department, they're second.
Right.
And they have, and he has a-
I don't, I don't think the issue is the final check-offs. I think the issue that I've heard, and we're having, is getting the project off the ground, and getting the buildings where they need to go, and getting the fire department where they need to be heard, and getting the conservation. That's where I'm, that's where I'm trying to make it smoother. And that's what is coming before us, but-
We should get that.
What other clarification did you need, Bill, that comes to mind?
I don't think I can get the clarification I want, because it's, Pat's saying he's done, and he needs to do what he's doing, and I guess it's not what I was trying to do, I just can't do, because, as you just stated, if I put down, or we put down mandatory on his sheet, then everyone that wants to go in for a shed has to go to the fire, which isn't a big deal, but, I mean, I was trying to make it so that Pat had the backing, where if someone came to him and said, "I got this big project going on, this big piece of property, he can sit there and say, 'You've got to do this, this, and this.'" We're backing him. He has this sheet, he has to do it. But I guess he's saying he already does it.
Definitely.
That's what I'm trying to say. I mean, you guys, everyone here knows that we have some situations right now before us that got out of hand somehow, and I don't know how they got out of hand.
But we can't discuss that this evening.
I'm not saying, I'm not saying the actual project, I'm just saying-
Yep. Pat, do you think, and I think George just said about projects in town, you said we have some more coming our way, our-
The more what?
Building projects coming our way, about you being busy.
Definitely.
How many more do you want to say?
SC Way, there's going to be a big project. Land has been sold to a developer.
Up there?
Down there. That there's going to be a big project.
Where is that?
Up Tech.
Up, Up Tech, SC Way.
Oh, yes, okay.
Sue Batch's property, they're in the process of-
Selling there?
Negotiating sales.
What is her last name?
Richard, Richard Sue Batch, along Center Street.
Center, yeah.
Because I'm taking minutes.
Sure.
Because Nancy's not here too.
Down further on Center Street, Mrs. Hogg.
Oh, she sold that property?
She has some land that she's considering. It's, her and her brother are in a little disagreement over it, but I talked to her a week ago.
Yeah.
That might be coming up.
That's Center Street also, right?
Right. Yep. Uh, let's see. Those are the ones that come to mind right now. Outside of the projects that are already in place.
SC Way, do you have any idea how many houses they're hoping to build?
I believe eight.
Eight?
That's what I was told.
How about Richard Sue Batch's property?
Uh, two right now. There's room for, for quite a few more, but they're talking about only two presently.
Two at this time?
Yeah.
And Mrs. Hogg, does she-
I believe it's one lot, but it's big enough that it would sustain two parks.
Let me ask you a hypothetical question. Is there any way, when the permit get issued, that we can put better control on the permit, but it's too late once the permit's been issued? Right? Am I correct when I say that?
Well, they have to go through all the inspections.
Right. Right. At that point. I'm trying to make it so in the beginning, the project gets off the ground the right way, the building's going where it needs to go, and, you know, I mean, it's, the permit is not an open permit, it's a closed permit, and we don't have any problems. You know, I'm just trying to get it to the point where, I guess-
What does an open permit mean?
Allowed to go ahead and, Bill?
And is there, like-
Is allowed to move forward. A restrictive permit would be that I only issued him a foundation permit, because he didn't have all his paper, not his paperwork, his plans in order, and didn't have them completed, but the weather's coming in, or something like that.
In order to get a-
So he's asking for a temporary permit. That would be one case.
And, and as far as, like, the assessor getting all her information and stuff on those kind of permits, on an open permit, would she be able to get all her information and everything?
Gets a copy of every single thing that-
Yeah, she got everything she needed.
That we do. She, she's the one that does get a copy.
Mm-hmm.
Yeah. She has everything on a, she's been fantastic, because I don't have all my stuff on a computer. They're all by building permit number. So sometimes, if it's an old one, it takes a while to find it, you know? I only, my daughter comes in and helps me. As you know, I don't have a town secretary, you know? And that's how we do it, but Debbie Webster, if she'll, all of a sudden, somebody down the hall, they'll, she'll find the number like that and come back, and then I can find the permit for them.
So Debbie has all of that-
Realizes quite often.
Go to Debbie's?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Never complain. She's been fantastic.
She's good.
So I guess the only thing, oop.
Pat does a really good job of keeping, if you don't mind announcing who you are. Yeah, I know a lot of people know you, but sorry.
I like him.
For the record. You know, we work with Pat, he does a good job of hearing people our way, and I don't, you know, obviously, every so often, something falls through the system. That's going to happen. But I would say, one thing that would improve the process, from our point of view, is more information. It looks like the sign-off sheet, often, you don't really know what it is that you're signing. You've had people come in, and you can drill them on what it is they're doing, but they're not honest, or they're not forthright with us, and-
Or knowledgeable.
I think he just nailed it on the head, what I was trying to say. Thank you, Mike.
Yeah.
I think you just nailed it on the head, what I wanted. Yeah.
So, so maybe if Pat circulated, if he circulated the actual building permit submitted, or something, so that we could read it and say, "Oh, yes, he wants to put a house here," or something. That, that would help us. The more information that you got, the better it is, because typically, what we do is, if we don't understand what it says, and sometimes even if we do, we'll go out and look at it. We'll go out and look at it, and we don't sign it that night.
Right.
And, you know, that's working, but-
So you do a safe visit?
Yes.
Do you always do that? Is that a norm for you?
Not always. If it's obvious, you know, and especially if there's no wetland issues, we use the MIMAP program. We can call up any property on there, and look at the wetlands, where are they? And, you know, some of them are obviously used more than others.
So maybe, what I'm trying to get at, is maybe if the permit went to those departments. If the permit that got issued for a project other than a shed would go to the, the other departments that I'm talking about, a copy, or a copy, like Mike said, that would be, that would be to help the process run smoother, the information would go out, and I think would be doing what I'm trying to achieve.
See, what these people are really supposed to do is not only go in to him with a sign-off sheet, they're supposed to go in with the plans, which I tell them.
Right.
They, they usually have, they don't get a permit until they get the, this is the first thing that they have to accomplish.
Right.
Then there's the application, which is, which is the application that they have to fill out, which is three pages. Their name and address, their buildup. The second page is the builder's license.
Okay.
The builder's, it has to be licensed in the state. He has to have HIC, NCSL licenses, and he has to put them down. And also, the law sheet, is the workman's comp, which Nancy gets copies of all the workman's comp. The law sheet is the workman's comp on the application. So they don't even get this. They have to go through the sign-off before they can-
Get them.
Yeah, follow and fill this up.
So, good point brought up by both of you. What I, what I just learned is that if I, for example, I'm on the planning board, somebody can actually present me with a sign-off sheet, ask me to sign it, and there's nothing attached to it. No plan, no copy of a permit, no application, I don't even know what I'm signing. So, we don't have a problem here with the building inspector there, and we have a problem with a lot of people who are signing off on these sheets without any information. And that's wrong.
I don't, but they should sign off if they-
I agree with you. So, Bill, part of the problem here is, we have to look at these things, and there's two things. Is, do we have a problem with the process, or do we have a problem with competency, with people doing their jobs properly? So I have to question both. So Mike and Pat, thank you for giving us a very good idea. I would be inclined to put out a letter and make a suggestion to all boards that these things should be handled a little bit differently. For example, nothing should be signed off unless you have supporting documentation. Fascinating.
See, I would take something and post it on my board, like I have a lot of things posted, so the builders can see that and realize.
This is what I need to do.
When it's all before him, they're going to have the plans that they show me.
Right.
The only time they wouldn't have, like, if they're doing something very-
Small.
They're doing their kitchen over, they're taking their cabinets out.
Right. We're not talking about that anyway.
You know, something minor. They're not going to come in with architectural plans and all that.
Right. Right.
We shouldn't expect them to.
No. Right. Like moving a wall between two buildings, or something. Something minor like that.
Exactly.
Right. I'm talking about the stuff that would go before conservation, go before planning board, the ZBA. I'm talking about those departments. It's, all I'm trying to do is to try and put something in place where, like, you guys are all leaning toward it runs smoother, people get the information, it's done right. And like I said, the ZBA, if there was a big project coming along, and they said, "Pat, would you come to the meeting? If you're willing to go, that'd be great. You can put your two, you know, you could be there." But I think, Mike said it, I think, I think, I think he nailed it on the head, where I'm trying to feel, that people aren't getting the information they need to get, and that's all we needed. And I, one of my things tonight, in Sleckman's time, was going to be talked about, was to have a meeting with all the department heads, bring them before the Sleckman, sit down at a table, planning board, ZBA, and see what we can do to make that all work smoother too. After we had spoken with you, we'd have a better idea where we're heading with it. And that's what I was planning on doing.
And by the way, we are planning that sometime in November, before Thanksgiving, on an off Monday night. We'll be announcing that soon. But in the meantime, if it pleases the chair, I'll put together a basic policy language. We can't tell the boards what to do, but we certainly can be a position that we can suggest.
We can suggest what-
All we're trying to do is make things run smoother.
Attorney, Ikeman sent to us.
Right. We'll include that recommendation.
I think we need to talk with them. I mean, I'm sure this is, this is not unique to Groveland. This is happening in small communities and towns.
Once a month, I meet with local building inspectors. Often, it's in West Newbury, but then we have other meetings, Indian Ridge, different kiddies restaurants. It's a bigger meeting with all the inspectors.
Right.
But all us local inspectors go to West Newbury and meet once a month.
Yeah.
And we discuss local stuff. There are actually better meetings than the main ones.
Yeah.
Even though that there's main ones, they'll bring in speakers about certain things, insulation, and, you know, and all that, and different things. But it's all local stuff that we're talking about, and kicking around to get a wealth of knowledge. They're fantastic meetings.
Who are the local building inspectors?
Pardon?
Pat, who are the local building inspectors? Who's the building inspector?
Well, like, West, West Newbury, Georgetown. Georgetown comes, West Newbury comes, Newbury Port, Newbury, Marimack, Amesbury, uh, Haverhill. There's, there's usually ten to twelve of us, and sometimes Larry Arden, he's an engineer, he will come in and discuss different stress points, different things that are coming up. He's fantastic.
He stays up to date on all of that, yeah.
You know?
Right. And thank you.
You're welcome.
Thank you. Good information, both of you.
Okay. Nick, I...
You got office hours tonight, Pat?
Yes, I'm in the...
Yeah, okay.
There's a note on my door down the hall.
Down the hall, yes, thank you.
Thank you very much.
So I think what I'll do, I'll just put, put a, just a suggested policy, and send out as a letter, just to recommend, all specific, I won't repeat, all specific recommendations that were made by, uh, Pat and both, uh, Mike.
Mike's idea.
Yeah. That'll bring together...
What John Ike Man has shared with us, so...
John Ike Man, and that, I think that'll, I think that'll help articulate Phil Dunn's desire to at least look at the process. But like I said, there's a process and a competency problem intertwined in there.
Right. But I think the process, I'm still not happy with the outcome of it, but that's okay.
Well, we gotta start somewhere, and I think maybe we'll nail out some clearer policy and direction when we do have that meeting. And it'll probably be more than one meeting, I guess, of the boards that are affected.
There was some, there was projects around town where they didn't get the information to get the project off the ground right. They didn't go off the ground right. And now we're in litigation over it, so I don't understand how we stopped it. I don't, it's mind-boggling. I just don't get it.
Well, as I said, signing off on sheets without documentation is mind-boggling to me, so. We, we can't put a stop to it, but we certainly can gently suggest people to take a look at how to do business, uh, and do it differently.
Well, when you start backing everything out from this office to other offices, you know, it's, and who's on the sign-off sheet? A lot of stuff going on.
It certainly is.
A whole bunch of people that, uh...
But, Bill, I commend you for bringing this subject up. It's a good, it's a good agenda item.
But the fire, fire chief does have a right to look at permits, um...
He does, with Section 108 and 107, as specified by Town Council. I agree. I totally agree.
But we also need to get the information out of the building inspector's office to the other offices to make sure they get the information. And know that project's coming online, that's what I think needs to be done. I think that either notice needs to come up, that permit was issued, and then conservation gets it, planning board gets it, ZBA gets it, they all know that project to their secretaries, not to all the individual members, but at least then she can filter it out to those other people.
Yeah, it's a good idea, because as Mike said, and again, we can't tell Pat what to do, but I, I think we can certainly suggest that. Nothing should be, if there's a building permit that's issued, and there's a sign-off that's required, no one should sign off on anything without having a copy of that building permit attached to that sign-off sheet, along with everything else.
At the end of the day, as he...
Plans, drawings, whatever, whatever, whatever's attached, it should all be there.
At the end of the day, he just stated that the final inspection sheet needs to be signed by him. So in return, it goes back to him for the final sign-off.
Yeah, but it's, it's the in-between that I'm worried about, because people are not...
Right, but if the in-between didn't get done, hopefully it would be caught at the end.
Well...
I mean, you don't want it to get that far, but what I'm saying is, I want it to be taken care of in the beginning of the process. I want the process to start right. I want the information, like I say, I don't want something like a broken record conservation planning board, zoning board of appeals, health, whatever. I want them to know the project's online, it's a big project, it's not a shed, but it, it needs to be notified, so everyone knows what's going on. And then, hopefully, like you said, the right information's being dealt out to them people.
I'll write something up and submit it to the chair.
So, Bill...
Capture all that.
What we're really looking to find out is, where does this all break down? And get confrontational.
Right. You know there's issues in the town, where the, we have some situations before us right now, that things weren't done right, it's gonna cost the town some money, and it got off wrong, it needs to not happen again. However, we, I guess it's, I don't know whose job it is to find out, but it's someone's to find out what we can do to put in place something to make sure these projects are getting taken off the right way.
You, you can't have enough of a process if people are gonna be incompetent. So, the breakdown is a variety of possibilities. We're talking about generalities, we'd have to look at specific cases, and unfortunately, some cases would be litigated at some point. But the process is all we can work on. This board, the only thing we can do in terms of competence is to make sure that we appoint people who are competent to do their jobs. That's all we can do. And that happens once a year, basically. And with some commissions and boards, it happens even less frequently than that. So at this point, what we need to do is stay very focused on the process, drill down, let's make some suggestions like we've recommended, like we're going, we're gonna recommend tonight, and with the chair's permission, I'll go ahead and draft something up in the next couple of days, as a draft, in terms of suggested language and policy, and what we wanna send out to all the boards that are affected. But then, at the end of the day, when it's time to appoint people, we need to sharpen our pencils and make sure that we're bringing in, on these boards and commissions, the most competent and qualified people. Because you can't have enough of a process and enough of a procedure if people aren't doing their jobs.
I agree.
I will only go one step further. And I'm, I agree with you to a certain point, Joe. I'm on the zoning board of appeals, I've been on other boards, and it's frustrating to go in there on a night and get beat it and battered because something didn't go right. And a project was, was told to be done a certain way, and it got done the opposite way. It comes back before that board, and you're a volunteer in there, defending yourself and defending the town for something that got done wrong. And that's all I'm trying to do. I'm trying to make this process run smoothly, and hopefully we can, we can do it. But people in town volunteer their time, baseball, football, soccer, whatever, and they're out there working hard to volunteer their time, and to have to go out and go through frustrating, aggravating things, it just doesn't, it, it makes it not worth it. And all I'm trying to do is, from the, in the get-go, when the project gets going, we have the right policies and procedures, so it gets taken off in the right... And, yeah, granted, some things are gonna slip through, and we're gonna have our problems, I agree, but if it's one out of a hundred, I'd rather see one out of five right now, or whatever we got, you know?
Well, he told us there are several projects out there, building projects, coming up, so, um, we better get a clear vision of how this should work out.
Okay.
And, um...
Excuse me?
We're probably ready for the next one.
We are talking about competency. We have the competent Groveland Baseball League before us. Thank you. How are you?
How you doing today? Good, how you doing?
Good. Congratulations, Erin. Girls play in baseball. Wouldn't you just love it?
Erin, you were...
She's the president of Groveland Baseball League.
Voted as the president of Groveland Little League.
Groveland Baseball League.
Groveland Baseball League.
I remember years and years ago, Sharon Poole over in Riverside was the first girl to be allowed to play Little League baseball. First girl. I remember that was all over the news.
I told the guys after I was elected that it was kind of a deal for me personally, as well as Groveland Baseball, that we're all being elected.
That's very cool.
Anyway, Bob was the previous president.
And the great president.
I just wanna make sure that the microphone is on. If you wanna put it in front of you, kind of in the, in between, so that we can have the people at home, uh, ensure that, uh... Do we have the makeup person coming? I might have a shiny person.
If we did, she's late. We didn't see her.
I definitely didn't see her. I came from Murrah.
Um, first of all, kudos to you for coming to the Board of Selectmen to ask about doing work at Washington Park, which is a town-owned park, and not everybody does that. Sometimes they just go full steam ahead, take on something, and we're saying, where did that come from? You know, because we have to know what's happening all the time. Because the taxpayers own all those parks, and when they ask us, what's going on, sometimes we didn't have answers. So, thank you for doing that. We appreciate you for, all for following the process.
You're welcome. One of the reasons why I'm here is this is kind of one of the tidy items for me to clean up before I go.
And just for the record, state your name, please?
I'm sorry, Bob Salvi. Outgoing president of GBL, Groveland Baseball League, Inc. And recently, um, we've decided to, uh, merge our baseball league with the ITO. It's the inter-town league. And the inter-town league is a group of towns around here, such as Marimack, Byfield, West Newbury, Seabrook, and a few other...
Salisbury.
Salisbury, a few towns. And, um, most of the towns have a demographic makeup. We have shrinking enrollment in baseball, fewer and fewer teams every year. And Little League, uh, is still, it's still a big entity, and we, we have problems in terms of fielding enough kids to be competitive in those leagues. So what we've decided to do as a board was to investigate and join the ITO, which is a 50-70 organization, which means that the size of the field is different, the, the depth of the field is different, uh, the, the rules of the game are more closely aligned with baseball at, at the professional level than it is at Little League at the amateur level. So part of that, in order for us to qualify to play for an organization like that, requires that we have a 50-70 field. 50-70 field, um, would require that we would have, um, a fence installed in what is currently a triple-A field. We have the funding for it, we have approved the funding for it. We also are going to install an electronic scoreboard, which we've approved and will fund. We're looking for the blessing of the town in order to go ahead with our project. We think it's, it's absolutely essential that we get this done in order to have baseball continue in Groveland. Last year, our majors division comprised of three teams, which meant that we had to play each other five times in the course of the year. At a competitive level, it doesn't do the kids any good to keep on playing one another. This affords them a higher level of competition, and also affords them an opportunity to play against the kids they're going to encounter in middle school and high school. We think it's a win-win for everybody.
Good. Does sound like a win-win for everybody, because they will be meeting all these people in KPN League, and whatever other leagues they play in, and it's great. The scoreboard, is that something you wanna do this year? The fence and the electronic score, scoreboard?
Yes. Well, it has to go in a certain order. We have to get that fence installed first, and, um, we're planning on being operational by the springtime. So for us, it's, time is of the essence, because we can't install the fence once the frost heaves dictate that we can't put the posts in anymore.
Right, right. So soon, before November? You know that, Bill, right?
Will the fence need to be surveyed? Will you move it to, will it have to be surveyed to make sure it's on town property? Or are you, are you good where it's...
We're good, it's all within the current baseball field.
Okay, so it's not a big deal?
No.
It's basically an outfield fence to delineate where outfield is for actually both the triple-A and the double-A fields that are there. It's kind of like in the middle of the outfield.
Hopefully, you're gonna be selling signs on it.
What's that?
Hopefully, you're gonna be selling some signs on it.
It's a great fundraising opportunity for Groveland Baseball, no doubt about it.
I always wondered why that other field never got those signs, 'cause I was trying to get one down there for years, and, uh, they said they weren't doing them anymore.
Don't lose him. Use your idea.
No, no. You know?
We'll get your business card before we leave.
No, but that other field, they, they can fill them up with signs.
Sure, yes. Absolutely.
What's gonna happen to the existing fence?
The, with ITO, two teams will go to ITO. That'll be what is currently our triple-A division. Those kids will still play on a standard-sized Little League field, which is 46-60. We're going to move our current, um, triple-A division over to what is now our majors, and swap off and bring the majors to the triple-A field.
All right.
And we do a lot of work with the maintenance of the field. We got the volunteers from the board out there every spring, cutting the fields, weeding, we're out there, um, doing everything we can, painting. So this is, this is really something that we think is, is really, really beneficial to the children of Groveland.
A question for Bill, if, if anyone needs to put a fence anywhere, what's the process?
As long as it's within the guidelines of the field, and they're saying it's in the guidelines, I don't see a problem with it.
Just you have to go to the permit?
I mean, I don't think you need to go to the building inspector.
You don't think so, Bill?
I don't think so. How far are you moving it from where you are now?
We're, we're installing it, we're not moving it. So it's gonna split what is currently the outfield of the, uh...
Oh, okay, I got you. So the field on the left and the field on the right type thing?
Yes, exactly.
Okay. So you're right in the, you're right in the, no, I don't see any...
And we're going to, is it, is it Groveland Fence that's doing the work?
Uh, no.
Parker?
Nope. Um, Fence, Stove Shop and Fence, and...
Oh, in here.
New Hampshire.
Yeah, I don't see a problem with it.
It has a very...
Sounds like it's just gonna divide the field.
I, I think, I, I'd make a motion that we say, um, Groveland Baseball League should move ahead with their fencing and electronic scoreboard if, if you're both...
I'm good with it.
Comfortable with that.
Well, let's open it to discussion. Of course, I'm in favor of...
The discussion part...
The support of the baseball league. I just wanna make sure that we're not violating any issue, or creating an issue with any neighbors. We're gonna bring additional electric signs, we're gonna push fences a little bit further than they are. We wanna put things in place, and then we get a call from a neighbor and say, why is that fence very close to me now?
It would run perpendicular to a fence that already separates the backyards of the houses to our both outfield's. So it, it would not be intrusive on anyone's property.
What about the placement of the electric board? Where is that?
Right now, we're considering putting that where, is that where the, the existing chalkboard is?
Yes, we can either do it inside that fence area, or, um, there's, we have a bullpen area. We could put it on the, the side of the bullpen, but there's already stockade fencing along that property boundary.
Right.
Um, so it could go, it could go in two different areas. It could go just inside the, where the chalkboard fence is now, uh, scoreboard, or it could go beyond the bullpen.
And it's not something that's gonna be lit 24 hours a day?
No, and it's not even, it's not, it's not, it's a scoreboard. You're gonna see numbers and letters, and we already have the nine o'clock...
Shut-off time.
Ordinance for the field lights, anyway.
Not gonna be, um, like, infrared or any, I mean, nothing?
No, they're all LED lights.
Oh, yeah.
I've chosen...
Well, during the game, and after the game, it's shut off.
That's right. It's good, it's actually identical to the scoreboard that we already have.
And Joe, when...
Amber LED lights.
When they first did the lighting at Washington Park, all the neighbors were invited in. Um, how many years ago was that?
I think it was in...
Time goes by so fast.
Ninety-eight, perhaps?
Yeah.
Maybe 2000, maybe 2003.
The lights, the, the lights we put out there? It was early 2000?
I had the date on my history of baseball board, but I just, the, the data's escaping.
But they all did come in, and, um, you know, I, I know the neighbors enjoy the kids playing ball there, they love hearing them, they walk out and watch the kids in the neighborhood, and, um, we can maybe reach out to a few people.
I, I, I absolutely would do it. We can make that as a condition as well.
Yeah, just make it subject to complaints or whatever.
Right, yeah.
But it would be, in, in terms of light being broadcast, Phil, or shed, it's, it's not pointing at a house, it's pointing to where the bleachers are.
Onto the field.
The stands, and so the people that live behind the scoreboard, there'd be none of a light pointing their direction. And the people that live on what would be the third base side of the triple-A field are sheltered pretty good by undergrowth and, and a, and a pretty hardy tree line there. So I don't see any type of light permeating through that foliage.
So, Bill, um, because we're the authority to grant permission here, in your estimation, with your background, this, this does not, this does not seem to be a, what I would call a permissible, something that requires a permit.
I don't see it, because it's inside, I understand what he's saying, it's in, they're saying, it's inside the field, they're putting up a fence on the field, it's not going near the property line, it's not going near someone's home, so, you know, I don't see a problem with that. I mean, I don't wanna say I'm the authority, but I'm just giving my opinion. Um, I don't see a problem with that.
You're expert testimony.
No, no. I don't see a problem with it, and I don't see a problem with the scoreboard, 'cause I know what he's saying. The center street is blocked by the tree, the tree line, the scoreboard, the backside would go to Landon Avenue, so you wouldn't be bothering them people. So I really don't see much of a problem with it myself. And again, we could make it subject to, if there's a complaint in the next 15, 20 days or something like that, I mean, I don't know.
Well, we're not gonna have a public here, and, um, I suppose I'm, I'm ready to vote then.
Okay. You comfortable, Bill?
I'm very comfortable with it.
Okay, so...
Can someone make a motion?
I'll make a motion that we accept the baseball's recommendation to install a fence and to install a scoreboard to help improve the fields, to make it an 80-50 field, what they need to do.
Fifty, seventy?
Fifty, seventy.
Fifty, seventy, whatever.
So moved.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Thank you. This kind of dovetails because we have Mike here and I know that Groveland Baseball League was hoping maybe they could become part of the CPA funding for everything they do over there. So I know they wanna come in and talk to you and then...
Yes.
Have they been in touch with you yet?
Yes, actually I sent an email to Joe Sullivan and told him that next Monday night we're having our needs assessment. So it's open to all groups, you know, come in and hear briefly about CPA and what we're looking for. And we wanna hear from everybody what their ideas and projects are. So, you know, whether it's this year, next year, if you have an idea, we want to work through it. The other thing that, you know, is interesting to think about is matching, you know, you might have some funds you've already got and need a little bit more. So you can come in and say, "Look, we'll pay for 50%. We'll give you 50% of CPA funding."
Mike, I have a question.
Thank you.
I'm sorry.
I'm sorry, Bill. Also, how about the work they do as volunteers? Is that looked at as in-kind donation?
Yes.
For that matching piece?
Yep, definitely.
Good, because they have gazillion hours with volunteers.
So in other words, if proposals are competitive, some of the things that will make a proposal more competitive is if there's in-kind volunteerism, as do tons of volunteer work. And if there's a way to add money to the project so that we're not funding it 100%, that'll advance a proposal better than another one that could still be a great idea, but it requires 100% funding from us and there's no volunteer component. You'd have to create one to support the project perpetually beyond that point. So we'd love to hear from you.
Mike, I have a question.
Sure you will.
And I must have heard it wrong or understood it wrong.
Me too. I was just gonna throw myself on the sword.
I had an email come across saying that the swing sets down there are... There's something wrong with them. They can't be used or whatever. So I was under the impression that CPA money could only be used if you're building a project, not to repair a park.
Right.
Am I correct when I say that?
Yes, that's correct.
So they can't come in and get the money just for a swing set. They gotta get money for a park.
A whole playground? A new playground area?
Well, I think what we're looking for is, you know, a big plan, a big picture plan. You know, it might be multiple phases that you're doing or something like that. So, you know, what you can't fund is to say, you know, "We're gonna hire ABC Company to come in and fix all the existing playgrounds and get it back to the way it was."
If they went in and tore it all out, it was outdated.
Yeah.
That would be something that you guys could look at.
Yeah, right.
Okay, all right.
Yeah, I went down there last Thursday, actually. Took pictures, looked at the swings and tried to just get a feel for...
How were they good?
Well, everything is solid. I did, and I was trying to whip the swing around.
Did you get on the tire?
I did too. The tie got twisted my leg in there. It was awful, embarrassing. I took some pictures though. But I'm ready to speak to that issue whenever it becomes an issue. If it's part of a proposal, I can certainly add...
You serve on that board.
I think what happens to the playground equipment in my past experiences, it becomes outdated, there's issues with it where they now say the tire swing no longer complies, it could be dangerous. They come out with a new piece of equipment.
Safety guidelines.
Safety guidelines change, and that's what I think the email might have come...
Happens.
I mean, I didn't...
I mean, except for the tire swing, everything looked pretty structurally sound, but I don't know anything about playgrounds today. My kids played on that playground. But I bet you current playground is not in compliance with whatever codes and gosh knows what's out there right now. In other words, it's all wrong. It all has to be torn down.
I know...
You have to get rid of it and rebuild it.
I know that...
And the good news is that CPA money could potentially be a factor there.
I know a lot of the parks that I bid on, they have to be handicap accessible. They have to have handicap ramp with rubber. I mean, it's pretty involved. So if they're gonna do it, really...
Do it right. You have to be compliant with CPA.
Stop from trash kind of... I mean, it's not handicap accessible. It's not a... Doesn't comply with a lot, but...
I think once you make... Stop making changes, you have to comply with the Americans with Disabilities Act.
Right.
We will be prepared for Monday night's meeting with all...
Good, good. That sounds good.
Shopping list of items to...
Load it up.
...mudify our park. Brilliant and truly, on the baseball side as well as the general public side to make it an asset for town.
It's a fun park, isn't it?
It really is. It really is. It's a joy to be down there.
It's a fun park. Any more questions for us?
So are we good to go with the fence project and the scoreboard?
You received a unanimous vote despite my initial...
No, but we don't have to wait. Like, can I call the fence guy tomorrow and say, "You're good to go," and he can put it in on Wednesday type of thing?
You've got the funding? You're good to go.
We don't hear that too often. We've got some...
We raised money for the scoreboard. At least we got about half of the money raised through donations and our fundraiser for the scoreboard.
That's awesome.
And then our baseball league has a healthy enough fund that we could do that for the rest of it, so...
By the way, the inter... What is it? The inter-league?
ITL, Inter-Town League.
Yeah, what are the towns?
Some of the ones that come to mind are, I believe, Amesbury, Byfield, Salisbury, Seabrook, Georgetown.
West Newbury and Merrimack.
West Newbury and Merrimack.
We would be the eighth town in the league.
We would.
And Merrimack went last year and I spoke to... They loved it. Absolutely loved it. Now, we play in summer tournaments that are 50-70 and it really raises the awareness of the kids on the field. It makes the sport really exciting for them. Right now, it's... It can be exciting, but there's a lot of slow parts of the game in Little League, especially at the triple-A level. At the... At this new level, it's gonna raise awareness and we're hoping, aside from the fact that they're gonna learn to play better baseball and be better prepared for baby... Be better prepared for high school baseball, that it's gonna attract some of the people that will currently lose into soccer and lacrosse. I love soccer and lacrosse, don't get me wrong, but we like to have a nice, robust registration in order to keep the league viable for the future.
Well, I agree. I mean, it's self-perpetuating. If you have a declining competitive environment, you're gonna lose more kids just on that issue.
And it goes in cycles, doesn't it? All of a sudden, you get this huge influx of everybody wanting to play ball or, you know, it does.
Soon as we get a rugby proposal, I'm leaving town.
Just one note about the ITBL. The T-ball level and the double-A level will remain...
Intact.
As is.
Basically as is. We won't have our Little League affiliation, but it will just... It will not change the style or the rules of...
That's the 46-60 field.
That's correct.
Got it.
And the T-ball league is the best to watch, don't you think?
Nice job. Appreciate what you guys do. Really good.
Thank you all.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. I appreciate it.
You're welcome. Good night. Mike, you can talk to us about the Angelini-Maddingly properties? And we got some news from attorneys that everything seems to be a go?
I hope so.
Yeah.
This is a little info packet I put together for you to update. So, as far as the Angelini property purchase, we're in good shape with this one time-wise. I'm not sure about the status of the title search, but I know we were close to ending on that. I haven't talked to Nancy about it.
I think I did get a late message from Nancy about that. It appeared that things were moving along.
Okay, yeah.
Was John Eichman the overseer of that for us?
Yes, yes. And, you know, the gravel permit, you issued that, so that was what we were waiting for in town. So really, the only... The only thing that we're really waiting for in order to make the purchase is Natural Heritage, the Endangered Species Program. They're reviewing both the Mattingly and Angelini purchases because of the well sightings on both of those properties. So they wanna make sure that the turtle funds that are gonna be applied onto the purchase of Mattingly and also the areas that they might wanna use to mitigate where the wells are placed are all in line with what their goals are and that their actual potential habitat that could be used to mitigate any future wells. So they're just about ready to say that that's all set. So as soon as they give their final word and the title is clear, then I believe we'd be able to purchase Angelini. The funds are all set to go, so I expect that could go within this month, potentially within, you know, less than one month from now. We'll be closing on that one.
Let me ask you a question if you don't mind.
Yes, sure.
On the Mattingly property, you need $120,000 in order to make a habitat for turtles or preserve a habitat for turtles.
Yes.
Is that 120,000 all coming from a grant?
No, that comes from money that was put aside by the electric department when they put the solar field in. Part of the condition, because they found wood turtle out there, part of the condition that Natural Heritage put on the use of the land because of the turtles was that the electric company had to put $120,000 aside in order to buy replacement land that would be a new turtle habitat.
So the full 120,000 comes from the electric department?
Yes, basically, right, right.
For replacement land with the solar field.
Right. And so we're very fortunate that, you know, we're gonna put that right into the Mattingly property, which is right next door, and Natural Heritage thinks that's just fantastic.
Well, the town is fortunate that we have to pay for it and the turtles are fortunate.
Right. Everybody wins. Everybody wins. So on the Mattingly one, I believe that, you know, it's the same issue with Natural Heritage approving that and they have to release the $120,000. The other thing, as you remember, we applied for this Land and Water Conservation Fund grant for approximately $200,000. That's probably what's gonna take the longest. I contacted... I included some of the information in this packet, but I contacted the woman at the executive office of environmental that oversees these grants. It's a National Park Service grant. It's a federal grant. So right now, it's in the hands of National Park Service. And I was looking at what she told me. So I'm estimating two to 10 weeks we might get the money.
And that's $195,000?
Yes.
Are we guaranteed that money, Mike?
No, we're not guaranteed that, but we can still buy it without it.
We can.
Yeah.
So it's more of an insurance policy?
Yeah, because what we'll do is we'll put that money... That money will go back into CPA funds and allow us to use it for other things.
It can't go back into this project?
No.
For something else.
No.
It has to go into the general fund of the CPA.
Yes, right.
And if it doesn't come, the money's already appropriated and...
Yeah, we still can buy it.
Right.
But, you know, for that amount of money, it's worth waiting as long as we can.
Right.
So it's in the hands of the federal government. So it's moving at the speed of government.
Well, that makes me feel very comfortable.
Well, I mean, at least the project, you know, it didn't cost as much as it was supposed to and the money could actually could go back into doing something else.
Right, right.
Where could that be used, Mike?
Well, for any CPA, it could be used for...
Project.
It could be used for affordable housing or it could be used for recreation.
Okay.
You know.
All right.
I met with the water department tonight. We talked a little bit about what Natural Heritage is saying about the mitigation and we haven't got their final word, but the water department and conservation would go along with this, but it's... I think it's up to you folks is as far as making sure that we have enough... Their concern is that we have enough mitigation land set aside for them to be able to put potentially two new wells in. Because when they're gonna site a well, they have to have a 400-foot circle around the well. They have to have easements through there for wires and power and the water line coming in and out. So that... What they're gonna have to do when that is, whether that's five years from now or 10 years from now, they're gonna have to go before Natural Heritage and say, "Here's where we wanna put the well. Here's all the test wells. It's gonna use up five, six, whatever it is, acres of this land." Right now, Natural Heritage knows that, but it's not in a specific place. So once it's in a specific place and they see, "Oh, well, that's prime turtle habitat, so now you have to mitigate that some other place." So there's hopefully enough land in the remainder between Angelini and Mattingly that is useful for mitigation. But what we'd like you to think about, and you don't have to decide tonight, is can we put aside perhaps five or 10 more acres from the busing property? So these would be... This potentially, it could be on the outer edges of Bussing's land. And what we would do is we would put those...
Which is now our land.
Yes, right, exactly. It would be on the outer edges of that property and we would put those in the same conservation restriction that's gonna go on Mattingly and Angelini.
And how many acres does that leave? If we were to do five to 10 on the Strawberry Fields land?
Yes, there's 63 acres in that parcel. So, you know, it would leave 53 to 58.
So out of 63, take out five or 10. And what do you mean by setting aside? Let's not use it for anything?
Right, the same...
To guarantee that what you need to do in the future.
We couldn't use it for anything.
Got it.
So you don't wanna do it unless you have to.
When they purchased the Mattingly and Angelini land, didn't they purchase for... I thought I heard they purchased it for two wells at that point in time.
Yes.
Now we're trying to take land possibly from the Bussing property because we don't have enough land over there. I mean, I would've thought they would've purchased that based on that land was gonna fit those wells.
Yes, but the trouble is, is until you put those wells in, you don't know what Natural Heritage says you need for mitigation.
That you have to stay away from, right?
Yeah, right.
So Natural... National Heritage has a voice...
Always.
...in this project in the future because they funded a portion of it.
No, not really.
No?
It's just because it's turtle habitat.
Okay, so even if they... We didn't get any money from them, where they still have some...
Right, right.
They have jurisdiction.
Would you say that's in perpetuity? That's their call on whatever they...
Yes, yes, unless, you know, the state did away with, you know, say 20 years, that was not an endangered turtle anymore, but we don't know.
The wells we're currently using over... One of them's shut off right now, I believe. Will they ever turn that well back on?
I don't think so. I think the plan is...
That well's no longer?
Yeah, that they would, you know...
Because it was in the cleanup area.
Yeah, they're thinking that they will put a well in somewhere on Angelini or Mattingly.
They'll never turn that well back, even though that land's been cleaned and it's gonna be deemed safe. That well, that's it.
Good question.
I mean, it could be very slow flow, but I think it probably will never get turned back on. This is the one that was...
For safety sake.
I think it was in the late 50s.
Yeah.
I have a picture of it, actually.
You do a lot of preservation in town. This is kind of getting away from what we're talking about, but just because you're here and it's personally between you...
Yeah.
That building on Washington Street, I know it's... The state has a lien on it. The state has some issues with it. How would we ever get rid of that building in Groveland? It's the biggest ISO. Have you ever heard of any...
Lot of back taxes on that, right, Mike?
Yes. I had a friend in real estate who, he's not in Massachusetts anymore, but, you know, he, what they do is they go in and reclaim properties like that and actually turn it into housing. The, the one issue that makes that difficult to do on that site is the lack of sewer on, on...
Oh, Washington Street.
Washington Street, so...
That's the big hole back on?
Right, right. And I think that that's probably be a no-brainer to do, but because there's no sewer there.
And how far away is the sewer? No sewer in South Groveland?
I don't know where it is. I'm not sure.
I don't think there's much in that area.
No.
Wow.
Which is, you know, it's bad.
They'll have to put a pump station in off the property or something if they could. They have to do something.
Yeah.
But, yeah. And for someone to go and take that building down and just put the land back nice, who's gonna do it?
Right, there's no incentive.
There's no incentive to do it.
The state's probably not gonna wanna get involved in it.
I mean, they have those brownfield site grants.
Right.
Which we should probably think about.
Look, we should get into that.
We should have, like, somebody thinking about that.
At one point, that building's gonna become unsafe, and the roof's gonna rot, it's gonna fall in, and it's gonna have to, something's gonna have to be done with that property.
So, what are those, Mike, brownfield?
Brownfield grants.
We should, we should put that on as an agenda item and maybe get some expertise in from our town and outside our town and give us some direction as to what we can do with that building.
Have we ever got a brownfield grant?
No, I don't think so.
I don't think we have either.
But that's a prime site for one.
It is.
And what does a brownfield grant do?
Well, it will give you money to clean up the site or destroy the building and make it so it's a useful, another, you know, somebody else, a builder, could come in there and build housing or something without having to pay to tear the building down.
Right.
I know that there were back taxes. I don't know any specifics.
A lot of money.
Could be a tax title.
A whole bunch of money.
When you have a tax title on a property that, you know, there's jurisdictions on top of that building or all over that building or land that we can't do anything about, it's kinda useless. So, we should get some expertise on it. I think that'll probably be a future agenda item later this year or maybe early next year. I'll make a point of it.
Put that in the minutes tonight?
Yeah.
Talking about ISOs, down in the square, Getty people are moving along, correct?
Yes, that potentially by the end of the year could be released.
By the end of this year?
I think so. They, they have to drill some test wells.
Some boring more.
So, how long that's, the company that's doing it, we've been monitoring them and...
Is that Tyree?
Yes, right. And I think she said they plan on being finished.
By November, right?
In the month.
November 15th, is what I heard. Around November 15th.
Yeah, yeah.
Mike, is there a place that any, say hypothetically CPA money could be used to?
Yes, definitely. You know, it, it's a matter of, again, it's, you know, the fine line between, you know, you want it to be a park, something there, but also useful space, you know? If you're gonna put part of a parking lot in there, it can be done. It's just a matter of...
The right plan, correct?
They had a plan done for that.
Yeah, I know, they did.
Nice plan.
Because they certainly need parking in Groveland Square.
In the square, for sure.
But it would be very pretty to come over that bridge and look down and see a little boating, maybe people could sit there, picnic area, parking, a combination, a dock, maybe a town dock that you could use.
I would, I would like to be in line when that property's clean and got the stamp in line to see if we can't negotiate at that point and get a, I know the owner is very adamant to move that property as soon as it's clean. So, I'd like to be in line, ready to go with that, so that the price could be right.
Well, we've talked in the past about possibilities.
Yeah, I, I mean, I think we need to have a plan ready to go.
Ready to go.
And we should put a proposal in for CPA, for CPA funds, so that, you know, we, we might not be able to use all CPA funds to buy it, but at least if we knew we were ready with some.
Right.
Who could, who would, who would lead this project?
I don't know. Could be open space, could be, you know, I mean, Alex does a great job.
Could be a combination of people.
I know, I know the plumber.
Greg Stark.
Greg Stark, he's been on this.
Greg has a plan of what that property was gonna be proposed when the bridge went through?
I think we do too.
Oh, we do have a plan still?
In, in our office. Because there was a Bridge and Square Committee, remember? And they disbanded when the bridge was...
Maybe we can dig out the plan.
The bridge was a long time coming, remember? How many years, how many back and forth to Boston trips? But, you know, there's the post office and there's a station. And of course, the Knoll Woods are right there with their business, and they don't wanna move away, so they would, they've been going to several meetings, Ann Bevelacra and her son Peter.
So, we have a plan?
We did.
Bridge and Square Committee?
Yeah, it was.
There's a plan done on that property.
You know where it is?
Greg would be a huge asset.
Do you know where the plan is? Can we ask Nancy where the plan is?
Well, ask him, maybe you can invite Greg.
Can we put that in the tonight's meeting notes?
Greg, Greg would definitely, Greg is very interested.
Reach out to Greg and write him to a meeting.
Right, I saw him at baseball on, on the weekend, so he was wondering what was happening.
Because we've got Mike and we've got open space folks.
We've got a lot of people.
A lot of people already tapped out right now doing projects, so...
You getting tired, Mike?
No.
Getting on all these...
I think Nancy knows where the plan is. We'll ask Nancy.
Yes, oh, yeah, 'cause that, we were meeting with people when Bill was here, Bill Dark.
How long ago? Was it 10 years ago, five years ago, and...
Well, we started the bridge and we knew that, I mean, the bridge, when I was elected in 2000, we were going back and forth. We had done Elm Park about that time. And then we were in Boston, meeting with everybody about the bridge and how we wanted the bridge to be a continuation of Elm Park and the lanterns. And then the gas station's sitting there, what were we gonna do about it? Because the state did take some of the owner's land for the bridge. They needed about 60 feet, didn't they? So, Greg Stark has a well petition on that.
Yes.
And we should include him, put together a group of people, so, because very quickly, November will be here and...
I think Greg has...
When we have the certificate of a cleaned site.
Right. And that's another one that could qualify for brownfield.
Brownfields money.
You know, so, I mean, if we got some brownfield money and CPA money...
It would be a win-win all around.
I have a question for you. The 200-foot buffer that you need from the river?
Yes.
Is that ground feet or is that, let's say that, when you're up on a bluff?
No.
The edge of that bluff has to be 200 feet away?
Yeah, it's...
You can't just count?
Yeah, if there's a hill, you don't count that.
Right, so from there, from that, from the, from the...
From the mean high watermark.
The crest of the hill to the, okay.
How do you determine the mean high watermark? So, the Army Corps, do they do that?
So, is that built...
We don't do it.
So, is that building outside the 200-foot buffer? Back of that building doesn't look like it to me.
No, that, both of those buildings are within the 200...
But it's pre-existing, right?
Right, so if we rush in there and buy this thing, we need to know what we can do.
That's why we've done...
It'd be greatly limited if we have to go 200 feet.
Until we see that certificate, what's it, 21E? Is that what we call it?
But as far as the 200-foot buffer, yeah, you know, we would probably have, if we tore those buildings down...
Yeah, we're gonna have a new set of rules.
And then we want to put new buildings up. We probably would have a little difficulty justifying.
Yeah, I would think so.
No, I don't think we'd be putting buildings. I think we'd be putting parks.
More parking?
Parking.
Parking and a nice little recreation area there?
Even a parking, a gazebo, anything, you're gonna need to be 200 feet away from the river.
Do you, I wonder if you could run it by Alex, if that would be something he'd be interested in doing? I know he's really, really does well there, or maybe he's too full, his plate's too full?
Yeah.
But Greg certainly is.
Well, we talked, we, we talked about it last week at our open space meeting that I was at, and, you know, we talked about that as another potential thing that we wanted to see.
A project.
Yeah. So, I know, you know, he might not want, be able to do all of it, but he certainly, you know, can, does a good job of kinda pulling things together.
Yeah, get a committee.
Alex Johnson?
Maybe get a committee together.
Yeah.
I know Greg, I had a conversation with Greg Stark. He pretty much said he was burnt out from the bridge committee and wasn't really interested. He'd help whatever he could, but...
But he has a lot of information.
He has a lot of information he'd help with, but...
And he might not lead a project, but he'll definitely be a part of it.
Right, he would be a part of it, but he isn't looking to become full, you know? The time he put on the bridge committee, he's not willing to do again.
And of course, we'd have to ask Alex, but Alex is gonna be involved with the Strawberry Fields project, so I don't know if he's gonna take, and he's involved with the rail trail. God bless him, and he wants to take on another project, that's fine, but...
I mean, I'm willing to...
I understand.
...rants, you know what I mean? I've done that successfully, so I, you know, but it, it, it sounds like if Greg has some good ideas, we don't have to reinvent the wheel.
Right.
That's right, there's a lot of information.
It's just getting a committee together that we could help run that project.
To pull it all together, yeah. But that brownfield money, it would be good if we could avail ourselves of some of that money. And we've never had that money before, so should be looked on.
But again, you think about it, 200-foot from the river, just the back of that building, we have to come out pretty far out towards the insurance agency.
Yep.
Be able to put up a gazebo and a parking lot.
What about encapsulation, Mike, for parking? You know, in a site that's...
You mean like in pervious service?
Yeah, exactly.
Yeah, well, see, again, you probably couldn't, you wouldn't wanna pave the whole thing.
No, you wouldn't, no. You'd like it to be...
So, it's really a matter of how much you need.
How much you need, you need for a parking? How many spaces would we get from that?
I can only tell you that I did see the plan, and he had showed me the plan in my office. The plan shows parking. If you can picture the bridge right now, this parking space is up against the bridge. There's a T-island off of that. There's parking that faces the post office right now, and there was parking where the post office was. And there's no, there was no, on the banking and all that, there was not, there was, it was gonna be tables and that kinda stuff. It wasn't any trees, and that was gonna become natural vegetation is what was there. So, it was a nice layout, and it was a night, I think, I wanna say it maybe held 40 cars or so, but it was a nice layout that they had. And they had done a full, complete plan, and it was part, going to be picked up, I think at one point, he said, part of the bridge product, but then it was dropped.
Yeah. See, we could use some CPA money to hire a planner to draw up the plan for us rather than having to do it ourselves.
Right.
So, you know...
That would be great to use that money.
That's what we did with the Vito Museum.
Right.
We gave them money to go out and hire the planner to put it together.
And you know what? That's the wise thing to do.
Well, that's a good idea. I might propose that next week.
Yes.
October 27th. I can, I can make proposals even if I'm on the board, right?
Yeah, oh, yeah.
And I can vote on them?
Yep.
I got you off the subject, I'm sorry. I'm sorry. I probably should've done a cup of coffee with you.
So, think about that issue with the Bussing property, because, you know, it's rarely in your hands. And, you know, you might wanna talk to the Water Department to hear a little bit more about, they can speak on it a little bit better than I can about the well development and what the...
The future use.
...are with that. But, you know, we're not really sure. We just, it's like extra added insurance that we could add in there in case...
I think it presents us in a good light that we have been forward-thinking on this, and, you know, when you apply for something, that we did make every effort to protect more acreage there.
The state is very impressed with us.
Good.
They think that...
Glad somebody is.
Well, I'm glad they are.
They think we're doing great things by buying all that. You know, I mean, they think we're forward-looking, which was what I was always saying about it, you know? We're not, it's costing us money today, but it's rarely gonna pay off in the future for those wells and the park and recreation stuff, so, you know.
I wish they would grace us with some highway money as well.
The...
And you know what? The real estate too, because Lynn Papp has told me that people looking for a community to move to, bring their children up and send them to school, they look at these things. They wanna see what, what you've done with parks and recreation and open space and trails.
The, the five acres that you need to set aside, could it, like, I think I heard you say, could it be around the edges? Like, so it, it does have to be one square box we give them, or could it be used land-wise?
It could be whatever we, however we can designate.
Right, right, okay. Because what I was saying, if they ended up turning that five acres into walking space around, which then didn't disturb the middle, and the middle could be used later for fields or whatever, so it'd be, kinda become a layout issue.
Yeah.
You know what I mean? There's a little jump into this thing overnight, overnight and say, yes, and just give them a block of five acres. If the outside edges could be used, that way the, the inner piece could be done later for something else. I'd like to see them just take a piece of land and say, oh, well, that's down the road, it hurt us.
Yeah, no, I, I think, you know, you would wanna avoid the flat...
Right.
Central part of the property.
Right, right.
Good.
As far as, you know, the purchases, I think they're moving along, and I'm hoping that we can complete the whole thing this year.
Well, I think so. I think I got something from Nancy just before I came down, that she had spoken this afternoon with John Eichman, and things were, seemed to be in order.
So, if we, I'm sorry to interrupt you, Betty. If we, we make the purchase, and then the federal grant comes in much later, can we still, what happens?
You can't buy it. If we wanna get that federal grant...
Give it away.
You can't buy it until they tell us.
And you think it'll come in 10 weeks or so?
I'm hoping, yes. Based on, I'm communicating with that Melissa's crying there. So, that was the latest thing today. I just keep asking her every, every opportunity.
She works for the Commonwealth, huh?
Yes.
Okay.
I think what Mike's saying is if we hold off a little bit, it's, it's gonna be better for us, and it's gonna be more...
No, I understand. I'd like to get my...
More beneficial to us to wait.
I'd like to get $195,000 in the door.
But it's a matter of convincing, you know, Mrs. Mattingly to...
Calm down.
...go with us.
Right, right. Well, we've all been patient through this process.
Yes, they have been. They have been very patient.
Yeah, exactly.
All right.
Very good.
Very good, thank you. Thanks, Mike.
All right.
Thanks for coming and worked out.
I'll see you Monday.
I was glad baseball was here when you were here.
Yeah.
Thanks.
Thank you.
Okay. Shane Moran, yeah, representative for the Whittier Regional Vocational School. And she did send us a letter. Did, I think we just, do we need to read that, Joe?
Sure, just, just a, just a very brief cap on this, a recap. We received a letter from the Groveland representative to the Whittier Regional Vocational School, and it looks like the school has made a policy decision that families and students who are interested in exploring Whittier as an alternative, an education alternative, they can no longer have, as an option, the ability to go on-site to visit the school. They can only gather and make a determination on information through the high school guidance office. So, she went on to say the, you know, the excellence of education at the school and some, some data here, but what I'm gonna recommend is, first of all, I appreciate our representative alerting us. Secondly, we can't do anything to change that policy, but we can ask the school to provide us with a rationale as to why they made that decision. And, and maybe that might lead to a discussion a little bit later that might give us a little bit of leverage if we feel that that's something that we, we don't agree on. So, I think if it's okay with you, what I think we should do, and I can draft it and send it to you, Betty, is just draft a letter to the superintendent of Whittier, ask him to provide in writing to us, or if he's willing to visit us, that's fine, or one of his representatives and...
Maybe we could invite him here one night.
Yeah, and basically explain to us the rationale as to why, in my opinion, it seems to be a pretty significant event, and that is that if a child or family's interested in Whittier, they can't go down and visit it anymore. They can't go on-site visit. And that, to me, seems a little odd. I'll just leave it at that.
It's a very good school, and, you know, kids would like to visit and walk through and see if they're going to be comfortable.
Right. Plus, we're funding, you know?
That's right, we send money there.
Costing us money, and, you know, we wanna make sure our kids are well-served. If they're gonna go there, they wanna make sure that they, they get a chance to be teachers and see the facilities.
To do it with their parents.
I know, I had a son that went to Whittier, and I know that one of the best days of his life was the day that he was able to go to Whittier and view the school and be able to go through all the shops, and, and really made him excited, and it also gave him a good feel for, is this for me or isn't for me? So, I think it's very important that kids do have a chance to go to, to the school and visit it and what have you. I, I think to send someone there blinded would be kinda crazy.
I'm sure they...
And I don't understand why they would do this, but like Joe said, if we can get a letter back from them, it'd be great to hear.
Yeah, we, we have to understand. I know when I was on the school committee, sometimes you'd come up with ideas and policies and, and then, you know, several meetings later, people would come out and sometimes angry and not understanding why. So, we, we need to understand the rationale. There, there has to be some good reason. It could be financial, it could be some restrictive condition that we don't know about. We have to understand it before we can, before we can...
I'm sure we're gonna have parents asking us why the kids don't have that day to visit.
I think we fund the school, and I definitely think they owe us a good explanation.
Absolutely, I agree. So, if you're, if we have consensus, I'll go ahead and draft something and send it along to you, Betty, for your approval and...
We'll ask Mr. DeRosa what, what happened, and maybe we're not getting the full picture, but I'm sure Jane felt it was very important that we know this.
Well-written letter, and I commend Jane for letting us know.
So, do you need a motion or, or just?
No, just consensus.
Yeah, that's good, don't you think?
That's fine with me, yeah.
With that. Chris Reddy has resigned as a member of the Zoning Board of Appeals effective immediately, and he's traveling a lot, and he goes all over the world. Actually, he's been traveling in China, so he felt like he couldn't do his due diligence serving on this board any longer when he wasn't going to be present and available. Mike Ward, who's an alternate on that board, would like to move up as a full-time member. And I think that's, Mike's been serving as an alternate for more than a year now, so we should entertain doing that. It's, do I have a motion that Michael Ward become the...
The beginning.
We had a letter from Mike before, I believe.
Yeah, Mike did write us a letter, and he indicated his interest in graduating, for lack of a better word, he didn't use that word, from a senior alternate to a full-voting member of the zoning board. And just so the public knows, we have alternate members on the zoning board. Probably one of the primary reasons is it's a very complicated service, there's a lot of knowledge, a lot of data, a lot of information that has to be synthesized into decisions. It's a lot to learn. So, an alternate member does not have voting rights, but has the opportunity to serve for one year instead of a three-year full term, but with the one year, be able to basically observe, participate in conversations, but also kinda flatten the learning curve a little bit. So, Mike has been very, very good, has jumped in enthusiastically, been a great addition to the zoning board, which is a great institution. It's come a long way from some of the controversies from many years ago, and we now have full membership. Unfortunately, we're losing Chris. Chris has been a tremendous asset, but I think we're gonna be able to replace him with Mike, who is really distancing himself from the training wheels a little bit, and as a senior alternate, I think is, is ready to move forward as a key decision-maker on the zoning board. So, I applaud both Chris for his service, but also we wanna thank Mike for stepping forward. It's very exciting.
Joe, I just read, Mike travels a lot.[1774.02] Joe, I just read, Mike travels a lot, did you see that?
First line.
Yeah.
And is that the, do you meet the first Wednesday of each month, is that when you meet?
Yeah, he said he would make very best efforts to continue to, you know, to be able to make meetings.
Because that's a board, it's very important that they need a full complement of members.
Especially if you start with a case, you have to see it through.
See it through, or you, yeah, you can't, we can't just throw an alternate in, in the middle of something they're hearing, I don't believe, can you? You sit on that board, Bill, what do you think?
The only thing that I was, I ran into Mike last week, and we had a brief conversation on the side of the road, and he states in his letter here, it states, I am planning on running for the Board of Selectmen again next year, next spring, I don't know if this will create a conflict of interest or not, I don't think it will, because it didn't for me, so I don't think.
But having two members of the Board of Selectmen.
That's what he was saying to me.
Might be an issue.
Might be an issue, and that's what he said to me.
Well, that's going to require posting every meeting, and at that point, if he does become a Board of Selectman, then he would have the choice to step down from the zoning board.
Have you had a conversation yourself with Mike, Joe?
Not in a matter of months, no.
Because it, as I read this, it's a little bit iffy, I'll do my best, I mean, should we have a conversation?
Well, what we can do is, we can, we.
I mean, I'd definitely like to see him, but if you read his statement, it's iffy if I.
It's a dual statement, he would like to, here's what I suggest, you're bringing up a very good point, what we, what I suggest is that we appoint him, and of course, it's conditional to his accepting it, and then at that point, we would ask him to come in, and we can talk to him about it, say, are you really serious about it, I know you're serious about it, but are you, do you feel that you'd be capable, and to me, the most important thing for the full member, I mean, barring a family tragedy or sickness or something, is you need to see a case all the way through.
Especially zoning.
So, he's willing to, 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 to serve, the issue about the Board of Selectmen, there's so much service between now and if and when he becomes a Board of Selectmen member, if he decides to run, and if the people elect him, that to not put him on the board because that might be a problem later is not, is not an issue, the issue is, you're willing, you've expressed that, we're willing to appoint you, but let's come in and talk, please come in and talk, so that, you know, if we're going to appoint you, you have to accept it, and, and affirm that this is a service that you can carry.
I agree, as long as he's willing to come in and talk, and make sure he can do it.
Prior to our appointing.
Trying to our appointing him.
Or you want to do that prior to appointing, that's fine, too.
That's what I think we should do.
So, we will ask Nancy to have Mike come into our next meeting, so we can have this discussion.
Okay.
Because.
Prior to appointing.
Bill, you're a full-time member now?
Nope, I'm an alternate.
You're an alternate, so who are the full-time members, Jane, Dan McDonald?
Yep.
Yeah, Dan graduated.
Dan did, and Tom Wakefield.
And there's a girl there, the real.
And there's another gal there.
Kathleen.
Kathleen's there, okay.
And Jane?
Mark McCabe is an alternate.
Mark, you and Mark are alternates?
Alternates, yep.
Okay, all right.
That's good, you have a deep bench still, which is great.
Right, well, yep, I would like to definitely have him come, and I think, I think it'd be great, anytime we do any kind of an appointment, they come in before us anyway, just not saying, Mike, I mean, anyone, it'd be nice to hear from them, I mean, we had an appointment last week, we asked a gentleman to come before us, too, from the water department or whatever, I think it's a good idea to have him come sit before us.
Yeah.
Yeah, I think it's like a nice interview, and we all can talk.
If you feel more comfortable bringing him in for a decision prior to appointing, that's fine.
I think I would like to have that.
I agree.
Any appointment has to be accepted anyways.
Right, okay.
Good.
We also, in our packet, we have a letter, I think we've all read and seen, what's your thoughts?
Well, there's a complaint that has been sent to us in writing, in email, and it's not an item that we can talk about publicly, because there's potentially a personnel issue, so what I recommend is that we establish a, an executive session this Friday at 6:00, so that the parties can come in and, you know, describe to us what the issues are, and see if we can mediate what the, what the complaint is, and what the resolution steps could be.
Okay.
It'd be a good start, so I recommend the executive session this coming Friday, what date is that?
Friday.
6:00, will that be agreeable to both of you?
Does that work for you, Bill?
Mm-hmm. Okay.
Okay.
And.
Today is.
Just a good start.
Twenty. We don't need to vote on that, do we, or should we vote on that?
No.
And there's no need to have, it's not a water or a commission period issue, it's an issue between two parties, which those two parties will come in, explain their differences, and that would be the end of it.
Right, but what makes it our issue is that they are board members and department members, so that's why, because there's the potential for a personnel issue, at this point in time, we have to treat it first with an executive session, that's what open meeting law would compel us to do, so, there isn't any litigation, it's just a dispute between two people that happen to work for the town, in some capacity, and so therefore, we want to hear them, and.
So, that would be the 24th, Joe?
Twenty-fourth, yes, Friday.
Bill, that gives you enough time at the end of your day on Friday?
Yep.
How about you, Joe?
Conference, in the Selectmen's conference room.
Okay, and we'll have to have Nancy post that.
That'll be posted, and the parties need to be notified 48 hours prior, so that gives plenty of time, if they do that tomorrow for a Friday meeting, then, fine.
Okay, Selectmen's time.
I'd like to add an agenda item, probably sooner rather than later, I've learned quite a bit about the condition of our roads, we have an amazing highway department that, it's just amazing how much they have going on, and how much they've done, but what is really concerning to me, I've done a little bit, a little bit of research, not deeply, but I've asked around, and I've gotten some information from Nancy and Deb, our finance director, but the state is real short on Chapter 90.
Denise at Finance.
I'm sorry.
Okay.
Really short on Chapter 90, you know, that level of funding to, you know, for our, for our roads, so, we're going to have to have a meeting, and maybe a couple of meetings, and discuss how we're going to fund the paving of our streets, and the bad news is, the money from the state will not be enough, we're going to have to explore ways of funding, there is a possibility of doing a few streets a year over a five, or eight, or a 10-year period, which we can do by schedule, by borrowing funds, and then paying them with short-term, intermediate-term borrowing, such as five-year bonds, for example, so we do need to have that discussion, any borrowing would have to be authorized at town meetings, so I'd rather have the discussion sooner rather than later.
For next spring.
In case we might be able to put something on the town meeting floor of next year, I know that that's been done in the past, and people have objected, because they'll feel that, hey, my street is not going to be done, but yours will, but I'm going to have to break through that, and my idea is to possibly have a rolling plan, where we commit over a 10- or a 15-year timeframe, three or four streets at a time, we borrow the money, pay it off in five years or less, and just continue on a rolling basis, we have streets here that haven't been paved since the 1960s, and, you know, we're basically getting money just to plug up holes, that's a big disappointment for the state, I will talk to the legislators, I think we all should, maybe we should even bring them in here after the election, and talk about stepping it up a little bit with our, our, our funding for our streets and our roads, the highway department does miracles with short change, and unfortunately, it's on us, and I don't necessarily want to see a property override by any means, for any reason, but somewhere between the Chapter 90 money and a property override, the answer could be some short-term, intermediate-term funding, pay as you go, everybody agrees, never mind my street, your street, all streets identified, 10, 15 years, we get them done in priority, those in the greatest disrepair, go first, so that's my agenda item.
I have, I've been in Groveland, not as long as Betty, but I've been in Groveland since.
Yeah, much younger, I think.
Since 1986, and they had a great committee years ago, the Road Study Committee, they did a great job, they had a plan that every single year, they rolled out so many roads, there was, what Joe just said, there was always problems with people saying, my road didn't get done, but they saw it, they saw it coming down the line, and that was one of my proposals long ago, that we get the Road Study Committee back, I stated before, I'll state it again, this town is land-rich as far as buying CPA land, and all kinds of open space land, we don't have a decent park in town, and we don't have a decent road in town, that's my opinion, and only my opinion, and I'm 100% online with Joe, I am not up for increasing the taxes to the town people to have their roads, but yet, we definitely need to do something, granting money or whatever, but I definitely think, I'm on board with Joe 100%, it's something that needs to be done, and I know a lot of towns around us find the money somehow, because they're doing a lot more road mileage than we are, so I don't know if we're not applying for the grants, or we can apply for the grants, but I think it's due time we get on it sooner than later.
Well, we have a, we have an environment also, and not, not to be disrespectful at all to the open space folks, and some of the hard-working people in conservation, but we, we have a condition in Massachusetts where the, the state has made it very clear, they are willing to put excess money into rail trails, for example, but not fix our roads.
Right.
And you see, money's available for recreational purposes, which is not a bad thing, it's a good thing, and I support those, but that money that we need to make our roads safer and modernized is just not there, I was shocked to see how much money comes in with Chapter 90, it's just not enough to get around.
Right, it's not much money at all, but what kills me, and I don't understand, is how the taxpayers can go for a tax increase to buy open space, but not go for a tax increase to have decent roads, I just don't understand, I don't understand the theory, I don't know if the right PR was done at the time, or what, but I mean, I just don't understand it, I don't.
Well, those are collective.
I'm not against open space, and I'm not against the trails, you talked about, Joe, I'm 100% for them, but we are paying more tax for open space than we are paying to have, set aside for our roads and parks.
That, that Road Study Committee was made up of Peter Catchmer.
Yeah.
Joe, John Susi.
Yep.
Eddie McDermott, and they did, they worked very hard and very well together, probably some other people I've forgotten, and, no, they had a plan, this year, we're doing these three roads, and they spelled it out, but it had to be voted at every town meeting.
Yeah.
So, when you got to town meeting, after the few people in the beginning got their roads done, they voted against doing the roads that were at the end of the line.
Well, we might have to warrant that you can't do that.
So, that's the sad thing, I know, I've had people call me.
Maybe we don't list.
Say, they haven't had a road done in, since 1960, I mean.
Right, but maybe we don't list our roads, we list our dollar amount, at town meetings, a dollar amount we're going to spend on our roads, do you accept it, you don't accept it?
I, I'm generally in favor of doing, you know, important initiatives with, with committees, but in this case here, I feel a great sense of urgency, because we want to get something ready by February, I believe, January, February.
We're going to the first of the year.
First of the year, so we can get it on the warrant next year, if possible, so if we can get this on the agenda, and Betty, you are key author of the agenda, so if you can help us get this on the agenda sooner rather than later, then the two people that need to be here would be Bob Arakilian, our Highway Commissioner, and Denise, our Finance Director, and I think that between the two of them, we can ask them enough questions, and they can give us enough ideas that we're going to be moving quickly towards putting something together, much faster than if we engage in a process of trying to put another committee together going into the holidays.
It's too hard, yeah.
By the time they get together, and we recruit people, and they go through their process, it'll be too late, we need to, in my opinion, try to put something on for next year, and really begin a five- and 10-year process, and while I'm on the Board of Selectmen, I will get on that floor, and I will pitch it, I'll do everything in my power to convince people, let's do this fairly, it's going to be your street, my street, and everybody else's street.
Yeah, it has to be fair.
It's going to be, it's going to require a little salesmanship.
Right now, what's done, and I believe, is they have X amount of dollars of Chapter 90 money, and what they've been doing is doing the worst roads, and, which is a Band-Aid for most part, of course, yes.
Well, you have to also do the major highways first.
Well, then Route 97 is going to be done through a grant.
Right.
Next spring, possibly.
Oh, very good, I didn't know that.
Yeah, that's all, that's all online, Bob's been working on that tirelessly, and I know that project is going out a bit, I believe in December, don't quote me exactly, but that 97 project will be taken care of, they're going to widen the road and put some sidewalks in, go into Bagnos School, and I know it's, that project's ready to go down the pike any day, so, but I'm talking about other town, I know Center Street has some sections, Governor's Road, I mean, there's a lot of main roads in Groveland, they're in tough shape right now, and.
Yeah, we have, we have some.
And I know the money's not there, it's not enough, he doesn't have enough money to do what he needs to do, and I definitely agree, I mean, we need to find a new way, and educate the people, educate the people that we don't need to buy land for a few years, and we need to do our roads for a few years, I mean, I definitely think.
Right, we can't neglect other areas.
Yeah, you can't neglect the parks and the roads and.
And I, what, what my challenge will be with Denise especially, is, is there a way that we can do it without a debt exclusion or an override, that's the key, and that's my hope, that means we have to do it in a rolling basis, pay as you go, and as we can afford, I plan three, three streets a year, I don't know, but it's got to be done.
We have Chapter 90 money right now that we're going to get some, so we're only looking for extra money to do some extra roads, so if we come up with a dollar amount over and above the Chapter 90 money or whatever, or increase the Chapter money, she'd probably be the person to ask, but I know she came from a big town, and I'm sure she's run into the problem over there before, so I'm sure if we can have her come to a meeting, we can talk strictly to her on this issue, she probably could help us.
So, we're in consensus.
I'm in consensus, if we bring her in.
Maybe you can push the issue to have this on the next meeting.
I would, I will ask to have the road study issue resurrected, and maybe tweaked, so that the three of us, along with Denise and Bob, can work on this and get it ready for Springtown Meeting, correct?
Yeah, great.
And we need to be working on the square, too.
Right.
And bringing the right people in to take part in that, and we know we need a policy on parks and playing fields, we need a commissioner to help us with all these requests, and a line of resources to take care of what we need, we've got to look ahead to that.
Yeah, that is, that is another agenda, that's, I'm glad you brought that up, that's another agenda item that we can push now, because Denise is going to participate in all meetings going forward.
Right.
So, we'd like to have, I'd like to see, in November, a discussion about recreation, how we're going to run it, how we're going to manage it.
I think November, we really should dig into all of these.
Yeah, we really need to put that on there now.
So, do you want to, to back up a step, do you want to put on a next meeting to have Bob and Denise meet with us?
Absolutely, yeah.
So, you want that for the next meeting, let's just get some, let's get that next meeting set tonight.
Yeah, for sure.
So, Bob would be one of, with Denise to come.
Yeah, we need Bob and Denise to talk about funding.
Next meeting.
Okay, all right, and then the other piece was?
And then if we can do it the next meeting, why not, let's talk about the recreation.
The square.
Denise will be here, because she, she has some ideas.
Yeah, there's time.
I know that Steve Merrill and the Groveland Rec folks have some ideas, so let's put them on.
Right, baseball has ideas.
So, it's fall.
Steve does.
I think the girl from the baseball, she needs to go before CPA, and I think she knows that already.
I think she's going to be at their next meeting.
Right, so she's working on that.
It's good that they came in tonight, I don't know the gal with it, we should have asked her name.
To go back to the earlier issues on, do we need to, we had the, we had the building inspector, which we know Joe's going to hit a lot for us with a letter, the baseball we're all set with, Mike Dempsey, we're pretty much set with, yeah, so I think the next agenda, if we put four items on there, three items to go through, that would be great.
Yeah, might be a long meeting, but let's get it done, we want to take care of some business, because if anything comes up that we need for town meeting, we don't want to find that out in January, we want to find out before Thanksgiving.
Right, and this, you know, when we put this warrant together for town meeting, Town Council needs to get this in adequate time to go over it all, they can't be, you know, we can't be making changes at the 11th hour, and people.
They've been good to us.
They've been very good to us, but we should be, yeah, they do.
I think that, before I became Selectman, some of the issues in Groveland that doesn't pass and doesn't pass right is because it's not presented to the town people early enough, the town people don't get it early enough before the elections to review it and understand it, and I think that we needed, we owe them the justification to tell the town people ahead of time, okay, we're going to do this, we're going to do that, this is what we're doing, this is what's coming before you in town meeting, I've heard more people in town say, I didn't even know that was coming on town meeting, so we need to bring that out ahead of time, and when we get to town meeting, we owe the respect of the town to do the right PR on it, like Joe just said a minute ago, someone needs to stand up, put the issue out, spell it out in English, and let the town people notice what's before them, and they make, they can make a vote, and it will be an educated vote to vote on what they vote on at town meeting, that's my opinion.
Excellent, good one, thank you. Excellent, good one, thank you.
The last item on the, this is the open session, I just wanted you to know that I had asked, I had asked Betty for permission to take a walk through the SD property and I went with members of the Conservation Board last Friday and the owner, Eric Harper, and I just wanted to report that the conversation was very, very productive and very positive. There are issues that do need to be resolved. The conservation issues are basically dealt with the 200-foot buffer. You basically can't have things inside of 200 feet.
From the river.
From the river. And they took out their tape measures and they measured everything and everything was in line except for one operation. And that is an operation that's been there for a long time and it's a boat operation with its repairs done to, to older boats and houseboats. So Eric Harper addressed the board. It wasn't a hearing, it was just a walkthrough, it was an informational session, but there was agreement that Eric will participate pretty aggressively in meeting with the Conservation Board in the next couple of weeks, two or three weeks, to address their, their, their concerns and, you know, secure the necessary documentation to move forward with being sure that they're, he's completely compliant with all conservation matters. Also, we spoke very briefly about some of the butters who expressed some concerns about the work that's being done and the plans for that property. And I asked a question to all the Conservation Members, I said, "Is anything that the, any of the butters have brought up that is a specific concern or seems to be a violation to you on the Conservation Board and to a man?" They said, "No, there is no concern that's been expressed by, on a butter that the Conservation Committee believes is, is a concern that they would have to address." So that's my update.
Okay.
And thank you for allowing me that discretion.
I wish I had thought to talk to Mike about that, too. Thank you.
My, my only, only thing on the issue at the Harper property would be is, it sounds like, Joe, you just stated that everything's in line over there with the Conservation, what have you.
Well, it needs to be in line. Not everything is, but except for one operation.
But they've got it under control and it will be in line.
Right.
And again, there's a piece of property that I'm 100%, I've said it, I'm 100% for that piece of property. I think what's going on down there, we need it. I'm hoping the owner will come back in line, whatever he needs to get in line, get it in line and get the project on and do it according to the plan, plans provided, that's, I mean.
I think, I think Mr. Harper's up to that task. He's, he has been from the beginning, there isn't any blatant violation that I see, he's been compliant with what's been presented to him, is being compliant. So now, our issue is this confusion as to whether something should have been compliant or not. But I think that's all going to get resolved in a matter of just a few weeks. I'm very confident in that.
And the only thing, the only second part to this I'll say is, there's been some issues down there that weren't put before certain boards, and that's kind of what I was trying to say early on with the, our early meeting with the Building Inspector. I just want to make sure when these projects go on that everything, everyone knows about them, the Conservation, the plan, and everyone knows, so it's not the second hour we have to have the Conservation go down, unless there was a complaint, which there was or whatever. That's all I was trying to say earlier. I'm trying to make this so it goes smoother. And Mr. Harper's invested a lot of money in that property, I'm sure he doesn't want to be held up, I'm sure he doesn't want to go through this. And, you know, if he got the wrong information from the town of Groveland, you know, he doesn't feel burnt either, you know what I'm saying? So there's two hands to every story and that's all I was trying to do earlier. And I hope that, you know, whether you can, you know, put together, Joe, that would be addressed in that letter.
It will.
Very good, thank you both.
Thanks for keeping track of all that. You've got notes longer than mine, I'm keeping the minutes.
Oh, Jeepers. Did I say Jeepers? I hope I did, I meant to. All right. I think we, I went through a lot this evening.
The only thing I had, the only thing I had was, it was an email that came across about the key at Strawberry Fields.
Oh, I saw that.
The lock was missing or whatever.